Do you have a market in hand? Or market has in hand? Anything's good.
Yeah.
I don't know what that roster thing is, the second thing. I assume Margaret's taking care of it. Josh Cable's gonna be... Our Glenn Forest Cemetery is gonna be in a movie, so that's exciting. It's got, it's got vibration.
Couple items that are going to be part of the executive session.
And then, maybe, the one I put in bold, is the Green County Township Association meeting. As you guys remember, for each meeting, or while all the townships get together once a month for dinner, a different township, or a group of them sponsors it, right? Last year, we contributed in a month, and we actually didn't show on our months.
Two years ago, we hosted.
Two years ago, we hosted. We're always paired with Cedarville and Xenia. We hosted, everything worked out well. I think Xenia found us a spot. I think we paid them a check, but we didn't show up, and that's cool. I didn't tell you guys, because I didn't want you to have to worry about it. And then, this year, our week is, our month is May, which is a couple weeks late. And there has to be some, you know, they have to put out the word. Xenia says, she has an email today that said, "We've done it, we've done our stuff last year, and we hope that that then..."
Cedarville and...
Wait, is it Xenia?
This says Xenia and Cedarville.
Oh, yeah. We're with Cedarville here. Xenia doesn't want to, thinks they've done enough work, and they hope that Cedarville and...
I'm happy to talk with trustees in Cedarville and get on that, because that is in just a couple days short of a month from now.
See what they're thinking about place.
Okay.
Okay, that's cool. I'd love it if you would take that on. And the rest, I don't see anything else. Oh, that, the, we'll talk about the insurance plan before we leave. I don't know if that has, is that actually, does it have to be an agenda item?
I'll put it on, we'll do business.
I have one additional piece of correspondence.
Yes.
Might be interesting to the group. I'm gonna read this, because it's a voicemail transcript. It says, "Hello, Chris, my name is Lawrence Reed. I'm Garfield something Network Services. I was calling to question regarding listing Union Cemetery. We have an experiment, we're going to be putting them together, where we need to put temporary cell tower equipment at different locations. It looks like you may have some cemetery for the parking of a large trailer that has an antenna on it, and we put a tennis stuff on it." I'm gonna have to listen to the whole thing. Yes, the back right corner there. I was wondering if you'd be interested in something like that. We obviously put a lease to the project.
That's for the... So this is Clifton?
Clifton.
Well, I can take that and share it with...
I have a number to...
Tom Waddle and...
If you guys get interested, if you guys are interested, I have a number I'll share with you.
Yep. I'll be talking about the cemetery in our reports. Other follow-ups from correspondence?
Yes, sir.
So we have two citizens, Brett Stockwell and Joe Giardulo. And Joe has sent us an application to serve as a Board of Zoning Appeals alternate. Do you want to say anything?
Sure. I've been in the township for 13 years. I raised my family in the village, and served on the, for 12 years. And served in the village of Yellow Springs on the BZA. I'm a retired faculty member from Sinclair. We have a small seven-acre farm. I maintain that through CAUV program. I'm involved with Central State in some pretty cutting-edge honeybee research, which is pretty exciting, working with the researcher there. I maintain that property, and so it's able to produce 2,400 more than that per year, and maintain that in CAUV, so that... I'm in a good part of my life. I'm in a really good part of my life.
What road are you on?
Sorry? On Houston Road. So I'm in a good part of my life. I'm able to give back a little something civically. And I think it brings a unique perspective, particularly living on a small farm, and what that takes to maintain that, as well as living in the village. So I come with those two different perspectives. If I can be of service for the BZA, if I have that time, I'm willing to volunteer and do that.
And what are you doing Wednesday night?
Sounds like the whole package.
I mean, I'm ready to go whenever. The nice thing about this part of my life, I don't have those constraints of time, which is really nice. I'm able to do what I want to do, when I want to do it. And I mean, I worked for that, we worked hard for that in our lives. It wasn't given to us, we worked hard for it, and now that I have it, I think I should give it a little bit back to the community. So if I can be of service in the township, I would like to be able to do that.
What was your general overall assessment of your time at the Village BZA?
Uh, that, it was, it would fluctuate in time. And so, there were, I would think it was maybe two to three, maybe five hours a month, that we would have a meeting. You know, there'd be times, you know, I was the secretary, and we had to keep minutes, maybe kept paper minutes. And so, and had to keep up on things, and would read things, and stay involved, and follow what was going on. So I enjoyed that. But again, I think that just having civic involvement is an important responsibility for all of us, obviously. And so, so I enjoyed that time at the village. But then I moved to the township and gave that up.
Was it your working experience that you generally favored, you know, the letter of the law, or the particular circumstance?
Well, professionally, I would have trained healthcare workers. So that was a different world. I think that we need to be flexible. I think every situation is unique, and should be looked at from all different perspectives, rather than following something specific. Particularly during these times. I would be a firm believer in that we should consider saving the farmer, rather than we, I hear the talk of saving farmland, and I think we should also consider saving the farmer. And if we can save the farmer, we can save our farmland. So, we live here because I enjoy Green County, but Miami Township and the rural areas, I mean, we enjoy that, I enjoy that. And so, following the law, of course. But then, I would want to hear what, what someone else's perspective is, and if they're wanting to try to change that. I think we should listen to that and be open to that. And so, does that answer your, I think we have to have some flexibility.
Sure. Yeah. My experience is, sometimes, BZAs hear multiple requests over a certain amount of time for basically the same thing. And sometimes you get started with, well, you know, that's questionable, but it sounds like a good idea, and so let's grant it this time. Next time, the application comes in, well, there was a precedent. So, the last time, you know, similar circumstance, so I think we're entitled to it. Okay. And again, and again, and again. And as a result of those multiple applications, a lot of times, that law gets kind of sent back to the zoning commission, where the VA said, BZA then, at that point, is saying, "Well, we're hearing the same thing over and over, you know, maybe you should consider changing the zoning regulations to allow such and such." Which may not have been the original intent, but it ended up getting there.
I would have had that experience in the village of Yellow Springs. But also, with requests that came forward, I thought we were pretty good in terms of maybe reshaping that also, and sending that back to that person, and they would reshape that, and then come forward. And so, I just, I think if you serve on that type of committee, you need to, we need to be open. But I think the key word I'm hearing from you, we have to be consistent also, so...
Yeah, I mean, you have to think of the long-term effects of what you're doing. And, you know, those sorts of BZA hearings are so focused on the action, you know, on the table at the time. It's just good to take that 30,000-foot view sometimes, too.
I'm a, I'm a pretty neutral person. I want to hear what everyone has to say. And then, following whatever the rules are, let's see where we go from there. But I think what I'm hearing you saying is important. It's consistency, you have to be consistent.
That's all the questions I have for you.
Do we want to make a decision tonight?
I would move to appoint Joe. Are we at an alternate rate this minute, or are we...
We don't know, that's, we don't know where one of our...
I've been following up, and we don't know yet.
Yeah, so...
Let's go with the...
We have to assume alternate.
Yeah.
We have to assume alternate, but unless we get in contact with someone by Wednesday.
How much period of time, what would be the period of time you would notify me that was needed at that, at something? What period of time, as an alternative, when would that...
As an alternate, you should be at every BZA hearing to come up to speed with what's going on.
Second alternate juror, and you're there, but you don't vote until you're needed.
Right, that's pretty much the same.
Good example.
That's good.
It may be that he'll be needed Wednesday.
Yep, okay.
But either way, so there's a... He hasn't been appointed yet.
Okay.
Somebody made a motion.
I'll second.
So there's a meeting on Wednesday, and someone has communicated to me to tell me when those BZA meetings are.
Oh, that's another important thing. They're just as needed.
Yeah, right, okay.
And sometimes it's slow. The last couple of months, we've had, I can't remember, we've had one or two the last couple of months.
So it's been years when it's been one or two.
Someone notifies me when these meetings...
Oh, yes. They'll notify you, and they'll send you a package, and send you the applicant's material.
Well, it's been moved and seconded. Any other...
I don't.
Any other comments? We call or roll?
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Joe Giardulo.
I go by Joseph.
Joseph?
I'm calling Joe. It's my mom, my mom called me, but I would go by Joseph.
I will correct that. Applicant as an alternate for the Board of Zoning Appeals. Mr. Mutter?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Hollister?
Yes.
Thank you, Joseph. I'll do my best to serve the township.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate you.
Well, if you're no longer needed, I can, I'm gonna feed my bees. The bees are pretty yacking right now, they need food. So I gotta go do that, I gotta go look at them. Okay, thank you.
I think one of them may have come in my window last night.
Don't swat at them. Whatever you do, don't be good. Be good and be kind.
Har, har, har.
Thank you.
Any other agenda items from the public?
I could mention something that I did before, and this meeting is not on your calendar. I know you're here.
It is, though.
Well, I looked this morning, and the meetings that I could find on the calendar, on the website on the calendar, were only for the zoning commission tomorrow night.
I'm looking at it, it says Miami Township.
So, at some point, I'll need a tutor, I think, to help me understand.
And then it also says, "Next meeting, Monday, April 15th."
Well...
I'm here.
Let's, maybe just have another set of eyes, of people who are totally naive, looking at it and say, "I don't understand," or "I do see..."
No, I just looked at their calendar at one point. I knew you had a meeting today, but I looked at, there's sort of a button you can push for calendars, for meetings. And I didn't see it on there, I'm sorry. The second thing to mention, just as a curiosity for me, is there are now two sets of minutes for the zoning commission available through your website. But there's no, there's no draft for March, but the January, February minutes are on the website, and I can see them, thank you.
And they don't give a stress?
Well, for a while, there was no, there were no minutes. The last time I was here at this meeting in April the first, there were no minutes available in this year on the website. They may be available in other ways that I have not learned about yet, I'm sorry.
Well, I just said before, I appreciate your dogging us.
Not intended to be provocative.
I know, I know. I take it as a suggestion, helpful feedback. I'd like to move on to fire department report.
Okay. So, in the last previous, in the, in the previous two weeks, 24 EMS calls, 11 fire, we requested mutual aid for one fire call. No EMS calls, and we received one fire call from mutual aid and no EMS ones.
What was the nature of the fire call?
Uh, there was an alleged structure fire that ended up not being anything at all. So they called the Calvary on it, per our mutual aid plans, and unfortunately, it ended up not being anything.
Good.
Brush 81 repairs, so I mentioned, I finally got the estimates. There were two of those. The one that I'm asking for approval on is $9,496. The other one was just shy of $12,000. The difference between the two is the pump manufacturer. And one of them was, the $12,000 one was Darley. The other one, that's the $9,400, is a company called C2C, which is a pump manufacturer out of Canada. And did a little research on that, and I'm satisfied with the quality of their pumps. That work will have to be done at Atlantic Springbrough shop. So we'll just drive it down to Springbrough and pick it up when it's ready.
And that's the pump we had troubles out of sight earlier this year?
Yep.
And so, when it's out, getting fixed, we got...
It doesn't matter, we don't have it, it's not in service now.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, that pump is very, very hit. Or rather, the engine is, but... So I need a motion to, for approval on that.
So move.
Any other discussion? Call or roll, please.
Moving seconded to approve repair of brush 81, and you're now $9,496. Mr. Mutter?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Hollister?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thanks for that. I will let you know once it is ready to go down, and it'll take a period of time to get the parts in the repair shop. Engine 82, I'm still waiting for that to come back. They are trying their darndest right now to track down. We've always had a fuel gauge issue with that, that's very intermittent, which obviously makes it more challenging to track down. The thing that stinks about the fuel gauge is it will tell you pretty much almost the exact opposite of what is actually in the tank, which is...
Well, if it's consistent, there you go.
Well, no, the problem is, it's consistently, it's inconsistent, and then can be consistent that way, if that makes any sense at all. So really, what it comes down to is, we run it out every day and fill it up, just, just to make sure. So that's the delay on that, and hopefully, they can get that figured out. But I, I know Tom's been trying to, Tom, one of our repair guys, has been racking his brain trying to figure that out. And I just, I told him, I said, "I'll take him out for a beer or something, he can figure it out." Eclipse?
Did any of the testing gauges get repaired?
A couple. And then we had two additional ones. But when he was here last week, he spent the bulk of the time working on tanker 82. We didn't want to mess with engine 81, since it's the only one we've got right now. So he made good progress on the tanker stuff. So basically, at this point, the list that he's gone through has been, I mean, he's making pretty good progress. So I'm quite pleased with that. You know, we threw the brush truck at him right when we got started with doing our maintenance, so...
So is the brush truck that was downtown that one? Is that, that's one?
Oh, no, that was engine 82.
Oh.
You're thinking about the car fire thing?
Yeah, I was thinking about engine 82, was, when I said, "Was that the pump that was broke?" Was it, was it the one that...
Oh, I misunderstood. So, yeah, that's all fixed.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
How much did that cost? It doesn't, it doesn't matter. I, I can just throw that in.
No, that's okay, hold on a moment.
I'll look through all the minutes, we have excellent ones.
It was around $2,800.
And that was this year?
But although, that $2,800 actually was some other thing, so...
Okay.
Eclipse, we had absolutely nothing during the eclipse. Not a single call that was related to it. We had a couple of calls that were earlier on in the morning. I think Yellow Springs Police was a little busy with typical kind of traffic citation stuff. But the county as a whole, because I was in the EOC at that point, the county as a whole was truly dead. I talked to, or had information from...
Clearly, low.
Just low. Yes, you're correct. The, and I had some information from the state EOC, and the state was actually the same way. So we, I don't know if a lot of people went to other areas or what, but that's, that's how that worked out. We did have annual bench testing for SCBA. That's per our NFBA annual requirements. Those were done.
I would like, instead of having all these acronyms...
You want me to type it out more?
Okay. I don't remember from month to month, SCBA or PSIS.
I, I'll try and do that. I understand that it's, that's my language, so that's kind of what I'm gonna do. So SCBA is just our rating apparatus.
Tanks.
Yeah. The Public Safety Information Sharing Network...
Hold on, quick question. If they're all out of approved lifespan, is testing still appropriate?
They have, they still have to be tested to remain in service. So even though, even though they're past their lifespan, they, you still have to test them until they're replaced. Make sense?
Yeah.
So that means they, they're still effective equipment, even though officially, they're past their lifespan?
Yeah. Yeah, the National Fire Protection Association has a lot of different standards for like, say, for example, our turnout gear. That has a 10-year lifespan. And it can be in great shape at the end of 10 years, but, or, you know, at 10 years, but at the end of 10 years, it has got to go. But that's not the case for SCBA, because you can service test them, and show that they still maintain, they're still functional. They just don't meet the current standard. But they're also at the point that they're getting close to the end of their life, where you won't be able to get parts for them anymore.
So you've got to be budgeting for that, no?
Well, that's a big grant dollar, that's, there's a big grant out for that. Yeah, they're almost $10,000 a piece now. Extremely expensive. Public Safety Information Sharing Network, I was at a board meeting last week for that. Actually, it was only 30 minutes long, and it was extremely productive. We had somewhere around five motions that were approved. Those are all related to moving, moving all of this stuff to the cloud. So, you know, it's gonna probably be a nine-month or so process, but it's working.
Help me out, what, give me a routine example of what that would mean. What's public, the public information?
So this is all, this is all of the data that is shared amongst all of the public safety departments, whether it be fire, EMS, law enforcement, sheriff's office, CAD, so dispatch, all that stuff. This is all the software that controls and distributes all of that data, which is an insane amount of data. So the, the idea is that we opted to, to make a transition from that being based on servers that were housed within various buildings in the county, to moving that up into the cloud, which provides a tremendous amount of benefits for us doing that. And so, that particular, the steering committee for that, for the Public Safety Information Sharing Network has said, this is, you know, approved that was the direction we're going. Of course, it's not free, but, you know, and that, that was actually some of it, the last meeting, some of the fees that were approved by the board at the last meeting. It's just to help from our aspect of what our responsibilities are as a township to do that. Related to that was that I had a conference call this morning with Tyler, and then other people within the county. Tyler is the company that provides the software that we were just talking about. And it's, basically, we're, we're meeting every couple of weeks or so for 30 minutes to an hour, to keep in constant contact of, "Here's where things are going, this is how it's going, here are issues that we see." And today was mostly various issues of things that, that we're working on. So it's just, you know, just, it's a massive project. And we're just trying to make sure everybody, all the stakeholders are well-informed and participating in that process.
How well-attended are those meetings?
Uh, today, we had, so on our conference call, we had, I think it ended up with either 16 or 18 people. And that's pretty darn good representation. That, that's not bad. Our last information sharing network meeting last week, 25, 28 people, you know? So that's actually, that's one of the best-attended meetings. And that was a very functional group. So I walked away from that feeling very optimistic. So, yeah. The Ohio Fair Chiefs Association report, no update on that. And just to point out on...
Just briefly, when was the timeline when you got the commitment for the week or two?
That was one full week ago.
One full week?
I spoke to, yes.
When was our last meeting?
I...
First, it was February, they said we have it by the end of March.
Well, there was, there was that, yes, that's correct.
And then the last meeting, you said, "Be it, really?" Would you say send it with you too?
I don't know. So that would be two weeks.
Yeah, I can't remember exactly what I said in that meeting. What I said was accurate in the meeting.
So we should hear momentarily, any day now?
So, as soon as, I let a week pass, passed their deadline, just to see if I heard anything more, and I called the President Chiefs Association again, and he said that, he asked me if I had a copy of the contract. I told him, "No," but then he said, "Okay, you'll be able to get a conference from the executive director." So he was gonna throw some more follow-up.
We have a couple, we have, I don't know if it's the actual contract they signed, but we have a contract they sent to us.
But regardless, we're way past that deadline.
I did...
Yeah, nine to 120 days, I think we signed it.
And what you said, what you said two weeks ago was that in one to two weeks, they would have a draft to you.
Correct.
So that's just, you know, I actually called Frank Cook and requested that the trustee could draft at the same time.
So that would have been on, that would have been Friday of last, no. Let's see what she finds in minutes. Outside of that, that's all I had. Is there anything when we talked that I missed? Not to put you on a hot seat, but...
Yeah, I remember it.
Yeah. It's like I didn't, couldn't think of anything else. Yeah, it's, it's like I didn't, couldn't think of anything else.
Well, we do have...
That's last week's.
Later in the meeting, we'll be talking about some fire department personnel matters.
An executive.
An executive session.
Oh, and I had first...
First on our own, but then we, Danny, we would like you to be available in two minutes.
Okay, I, I thought, I said, I'm, okay.
Yeah. Last, you want to update on that?
Yeah.
Heard from last week's, going to be in minutes of April first. Frank Cook of the Ohio Fire Chiefs Association has informed Chief Powell, the overdue department assessment, one hundred and fifty-plus page draft will be delivered in one to two weeks.
I have something, back to the, I know with the ESO, I don't know what the stage is of the rollout of the ESO, but...
What is ESO?
It's...
That's our records management software.
It's a record management software that we just started a year ago or something. And I know part of that I had asked about because we're repairing a lot of things, keeping, doesn't matter if you don't have it coordinated that yet, that we put the repair for each piece of equipment, we, we keep track of it. But even putting down in the notebook, this is how much we spent on tanker eighty-two or, or B eighty-one would be helpful.
Yeah, so I'm just basically, there, as far as repair invoices and that goes, I haven't gotten that to start putting that in, but we will do that.
But we keep a track for, for the year, how much we spent.
Yeah, correct.
I see that we have thirty-three thousand dollars allocated for repairs and maintenance and...
We just took a big chunk of that.
We did take a chunk, we're about halfway through. That's a very, a very unpredictable, somewhat unpredictable.
Which line item is this?
Repairs and maintenance.
Three, two, three, two, one, nine, one, two, two, oh.
We don't have a proper Q cells.
But we didn't get it. There, she ran out of one paper. I, I asked her to send it to me by email.
I'm glad you're following that. Anything else on fire department?
None.
What about staff satisfaction surveys?
Yeah, what's up with that? I mean, I remember I was going through some minutes and you were going, you said you were going to launch that, did it fly or?
Yeah, yeah, it's done. I haven't compiled it yet, but it's done.
And you'll be sharing that report?
Yeah, I only got, I think, six, six minutes.
I'd love to see it.
Actually, it's such a small line, I'll just share, I'll just make copies, honestly.
Okay.
Thank you. Why do you think it was so small?
I think people, you, you know, you have certainly a subset of people who don't necessarily want to share their opinion.
Yeah.
And then a subset of people who may not think that it's anonymous.
Yeah, I, I think it's highly unusual that you would give it to your direct supervisor. Place I've worked, you know, actually, we would do it, give it to them and have them return it to us. It's, it's a lot of pressure to get, that's why I had...
Every time we've done a satisfaction survey within the organization, we've always done that.
Yeah, it seems valid to me.
Well, I'm glad a version is being done and we might change it in the future.
Or, or we could do it, this board could do it on our, of our own initiative.
Well, let's look at what you've got, and we'll look at the, the overall organization study that's pending.
Yeah.
And then see where we go with that. The numbers, again, seem a little low compared to, that is, the number of calls.
Calls, yeah. I, I don't have a good explanation for that.
I'm not arguing that we should have more activity.
I thought we...
Well, actually, it was kind of funny because Colin, actually, Colin and I were talking about the numbers, and he actually asked me, because he was kind of like, why are they down? I said, well, you know, you don't know. I mean, our thing is that traditionally, when, when we have lower averages, we always make it up. So by the time we hit the end of the year, it's still going to be around that twelve-hundred-ish number. It just, it's just how it is.
Doesn't seem low to me.
I keep seeing the number thirty.
We had thirty-five, but what do you, if you put fire and EMS together, right?
Maybe sometimes it's, it says thirty-five and then it's broken down. Anyway.
At that rate, we'd have eighteen, twenty a year, and that's, I don't know, I mean, never mind. No, no. Nine, ten, that would be nine, ten a year.
Shall we move on?
We don't want to go back, don't you?
That's, that's true. We don't have a back township, honestly. That's significant. Cemetery and then road?
Well, the interim Sexton, not terribly busy. Fielded fair amount of calls, both from funeral homes requesting information about locations and restrictions and rules. I've had maybe half a dozen calls from individuals requesting locations of loved ones' graves. Couple of calls from monument companies trying to figure out where monuments go, because they're ready, this is the time of year they start delivering for memorial day purposes. We sold three graves in the period. There were two at the natural burial, the very ground, very section, and one at the oak grove section, but it was not a tree, it was a traditional, traditional grave. All the trees have been planted, there's five new trees in the oak grove. We won't be planting anymore until next spring. So that's good. It, it's, it's great to see live trees out there now instead of black posts, you know, that represent trees. And just wait fifty years and it'll be nice to see them, you know? Pretty good size.
I hope I'm not here.
Wow. Roads, Brandon keeps himself busy. Fortunately, the last, during this last period, we had a couple of days or nights where there was a substantial amount of wind that came through. And other than some relatively small branches, that's about all the destruction that we found throughout the township roads. So, you know, you always expect some big tree to drop over, but fortunately, that didn't happen. Obviously, he spent a fair amount of time in the oak grove doing the tree planting for that period. Well, not really, he only put in, let's see, three, two. We took the one from the entrance where the, the new entrance sign is, there was, there was one that was there that was a kind of a, we put it in as a sample of what, you know, of what it looked like on a grave. And of course, it had the sign at the time, and we just don't feel like it was necessary to have it that close to the new entrance sign, and it was getting redundant that there are now trees that people can look at as opposed to having a sample sitting right on the entrance. So we put that on one of the graves that was needed. Back to road, let's see, I made a tour around, the roads look good condition-wise. The berms are probably two, potentially three weeks away from having to be cut. Usually, that's a first part of May thing, so probably close to that schedule. Our second employee should be back by then, so, and he would be clear to mow.
Yeah, what, what will he be, limited in?
Lifting heavy objects, and that would be determined by his orthopedic surgeon, what the weight limitation would be. He's not to work on anything that is overhead, and he's not to work on heavy equipment where you would have to pull wrenches and, you know, that sort of thing. Other than that, when it comes time, that's what we expect the restrictions to be.
Oh, that for one wheelbarrow accident, was it? That's terrible.
There were a few things that I saw. Grinnell circle, it's our, it's only April fifteenth, but Grinnell circle has a fair amount of overgrowth from the sides halfway around, impeding on the road, and that's going to have to be trimmed back relatively soon. Payment, there were a couple of very small potholes on North River that will have to be addressed before it gets chip sealed, but we'll probably do that before. At the moment, until Dan comes back, Dan, our, Dan, Brandon is going to be quite busy mowing virtually everything that needs it, like, like that. He just finished Clifton Center, I believe, today, and I would be surprised if this isn't next on his, on next on to this. Assuming the weather's not too bad. North River and Tanier, oh, yeah, there was a little breakup on, on Tanier Road also that will need to be addressed at some time. That is my full report from the interim road administrator and where else I am, Sexton.
Any other questions about cemetery or roads? Fiscal officer, fiscal officer report. We have a requested resolution, resolution twenty-twenty-four sixteen.
Excuse me, that number's incorrect.
Okay.
Would be eighteen.
Eighteen?
Good eye.
Amendment of temporary appropriations. Whereas it is an ongoing process to accurately appropriate funds according to the needs of the township, now therefore the trustees authorize amending the following appropriations. The general fund advertising increased by one thousand dollars. The Miami Township trustees authorized a fiscal officer to do so immediately. Do I hear a motion to approve this resolution?
In order to discuss, we have to second, second?
Yes. So you second?
Yeah.
Discuss?
Does anybody know what this is about? I, I see that we have seventeen hundred dollars, we've spent five-seventeen, we have eleven-eighty-three left for advertising?
I have not heard.
Chris, do we have some kind of gigantic advertising bill that you know about?
We did just have one. Not gigantic, but we just...
Two thousand dollars that we didn't have.
Now, I guess the answer lies with the, one of the two fiscal officers. I don't know which one.
I'm wondering, I wonder if she has the wrong column or... Yeah. Okay.
Well, it's been moved and seconded. Other discussion?
Back in the olden days, or when we had our township conference in Columbus, one of the, one of the presenters, one of the workshops was on resolutions versus motions. And it was very interesting. I'm going to summarize it as best I can. According to the revised code, there are only about ten subjects that require a resolution. Needless to say, financial, probably additional, full-time, you know, that sort of thing. About ten of those. Other than that, everything could be done by motion. Interesting thing I found out was that according to revise, the Ohio Revised Code, no resolution is effective until thirty days after its passage at a public meeting.
Resolution.
Resolution.
Okay.
How about an emergency resolution?
Now, there are such things as emergency resolutions, and, but they are only applicable if the resolution says, Miami Township, emergency resolution number two thousand fourteen eighteen. And there has to be a line before you get into the roll call or authorizes that says, this resolution is necessary for the purpose of payment of bills in a timely manner or whatever, you know, whatever whole thing it is. Now, I just bring that up because it's the law, but in twenty-eight years, there hasn't been an auditor that's ever said...
I was just going to ask, has there been a law?
Where are your emergency resolutions? So whether we comply or not is neither here nor there to me, but I just wanted to ask along that information.
Well, we could, it would not be a burden to follow that. I will, I'm curious, I'll track down in the ORC, maybe you have reference?
It's, I'm sure I maybe did, but...
It was pretty good. My experience of parliamentary procedure is that resolution and motion were equivalent, but ORC over, overrides that, so.
Interesting, because somebody brought it up, is, well, you know, we always say, I entertain a motion to adopt resolution number two thousand fourteen. Well, how could you have a motion, a resolution, which is such a... The guy says it's, it's simple, you know? The motion is for the board to consider adopting a resolution.
So you have to vote twice?
I didn't get the opinion that you did. I, I, I think it was just sort of generic, that's how you get to...
Well, I, I think it is important that we try to follow the rules, and I'll look at, look into it.
Okay.
Very much. And there was a time when we had this conversation, and I argued that they were equivalent, so...
So that's my fiscal officer addition.
This being the second meeting of the month, we have standing committee reports.
I do, I do number nine first?
Zoning inspector's report is usually the first meeting of the month, but if you have anything you want to bring out.
I would like to...
Medical call, respond, emergent.
Let's...
Medication, medical assistance, care, one, lost in place, two, five. Medication, medical assistance, care, one, lost in place, two, five.
Okay, that always makes our videos more exciting than we have.
Everybody wonders what's going on. As a result of discussions at our, our last public meeting, in an executive session, we interviewed and considered employing a new fiscal officer.
Arizona inspector.
Arizona inspector, fiscal officer, we already have a new one. At that meeting, we tentatively agreed to offer the position to the applicant who was there, but we could not come out, I mean, we were still in a public meeting, but there was no public here, there was, there was no minutes person to make it official, so we decided to put it off.
Yeah, we had told people we weren't taking any action.
Yeah. So as a result of that, I'm going to make the motion that we offer the position to Carrie Smith, who was the applicant in question at that executive meeting.
And as you are moving that Carrie Smith be made our zoning inspector?
Correct.
Do you feel comfortable seconding?
I'll second you.
Moved and seconded and discussion?
Well, one discussion is, I don't remember saying, I remember saying we were going to make a decision, that was very early on in the process, this is all a moot point, I'll say it anyway, it was very early on in the process, there was no way we were going to decide on the very first interview that we weren't going to, that we were going to choose that person. As it turns out, there are many applicants, none is qualified for, for it so far until Lori Eskelind applied on April ninth. I don't know what happened to her application. It, it was playing a disappearing game in my email unless it was an operator error. So I was going to suggest that we also, her being the second, very qualified, that we also interviewed her. She let me know this afternoon that she can't, she's not eligible to accept it right now. But I just want to make a note that, I, I don't remember us having said we were, we were, um, that we had decided after the very first interview that we had chosen that person. Because we were still, there are a lot of applications still coming in. And the other thing.
Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Two points there, and I certainly have no memory like a steel trap, but I remember discussing our interest in offering her the position and at what remuneration. And we thought, well, we didn't want to set a, a total at, you know, agree about a total until another meeting. Therefore, now, as to your second point, I remember Carrie's application, two people from New Jersey who wanted to apply, who were architects or structural engineers or aircraft mechanics or something like that. An application from a man in Cedarville who was a.
I think it was Centerville.
Centerville, okay, retired firefighter or something like that who was looking for.
I don't, I don't know that it's good to go in the details.
Okay, that's fine, but I haven't seen any of these other multiple applications that you speak of.
And I, I think that's because, live and learn, we didn't have a cohesive process before we ran out to do it. What, what Lori, what part of our agreement with Denise Swinger was that as part of her job, what, the culmination of her job was she was going to hand us a job description. And she was handing us a job description, you know? And then the next thing I know, it was being printed out and sent to the news. I, we didn't much, have much discussion, we didn't add to it, you know, the hours, that it wasn't full-time, it didn't have benefits.
We discussed that in, in our minutes.
We didn't add it to the, we didn't add it to the description, but that's fine, I'm not worried about that. But also, it all happened so fast, I thought, I didn't see she was writing us a, I didn't feel like she was writing us an ad that we were going to place the next day. I thought she was writing us.
We agreed to place the ad the next day.
What's that?
We agreed to place the ad the next day for expedience.
That's true, Chris. And then I didn't think it should be only placed in the Yellow Springs News. So you said, well, if you'd like to place it other places, knock yourself out. And so we placed it in LinkedIn and Indeed. And so, since we don't have subscriptions to that as a township, you didn't see scads of them that came in. And that's because we didn't have that agreement to start. So that, so there were a lot more that came in that you didn't see. And I, I'll tell you that none of them were disqualified, so.
Just for the record, the Yells, the Yells Springs News, and I, I didn't know this, but they have, they're part of a network where job descriptions get distributed to other, digitally not. Is there something called OAN? Here, I'm throwing out.
What is that scandal?
Yeah, right. Throwing out acronyms without knowing the whole, whole name. But we, we could have been more systematic.
If you worked out.
However, I do think that's a good applicant.
Mr. Carrington, would it be all right if I noted about Carrie?
Well, we haven't voted, and also we haven't settled on compensation.
I'm saying that's to be determined at this point.
That could be done, that is, we could, to be negotiated with her, and so we, that doesn't mean we've actually hired her.
Well, then, we'll hire her and I will, I will add to the.
Offer pending.
Offer $800 per month.
How about, how about re?
Whoa, 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 what are you talking about? Is that, was that a joke? Or we're not going to discuss it?
Well, I think we should discuss it. What, uh, could we offer a job pending agreement on compensation?
See, this, yeah. This is the first I've heard of an $800 a month stipend.
You wanted a number before we hired her, I just threw a number out there.
What were we paying, Richard?
Um, we don't want to.
And what have we now been paying Denise?
What we talked about at that executive committee meeting was $25 an hour, per hour. Hours, I personally, yeah, it scares me that you say we're gonna, we're gonna hire her, then we're gonna do it later, because then I think you're gonna get in a room with her and decide without the other two of us, so that's.
That's ridiculous.
If I'm being totally honest.
That's ridiculous.
So.
That's also against the law.
Okay, so why don't we want to, why, who will be?
Who will do the discussion and negotiation?
Well, we will either agree or we'll put it off for some other, some other time.
Why are we putting it off at all?
I've already thrown out a number, nobody wants to talk about it.
Okay, I'll, I'll talk about it. She has a full-time job, at least one. She, she works full-time.
And then she also works for Cedarville Township?
And she works for Cedarville Township.
With a remuneration of $750 a month.
Cool. I, I, I feel comfortable paying her about the hour because I don't, I don't know how much time she's going to have or how much she's going to.
Put in, yeah. Could we, I mean, it would be a, a normal arrangement often to, to say we have a, you know, six-month period and we'll review the agreement, you know? That is, is what we are, what, is what we've agreed to pay you per month realistic? How are things going? Do we want to change the arrangement and be upfront about that? In six months, we'll review everything. You suggested 800, I'm reminded that she's getting paid 750, but another township, uh, what about a, uh, an offer with a six-month review?
I'm in favor of her own wages, um.
That would be, I would, I would make the same argument, if we have a per-hour wage, I would still think we ought to review after six months.
Or three.
Or three.
Or six, yeah.
What do you think?
Uh, I'm fine with that, $25 an hour.
Did we discuss that with her that night?
Not hardly.
I, I do, I, I, we did believe, I, I do believe we did. I know, I remember, I, I was watching her face to see if she was shocked by such a low number.
Okay.
Doesn't have to be that low. Chris, if you want to make a motion for what you want, you, you're free to do it.
It has been one motion, but without any of those details. Want to withdraw and just make another motion?
Sure.
Um, I'll withdraw that motion, make a new motion, we hire Carrie Smith for the vacant position of zoning inspector, uh, at a beginning rate of $25 an hour and a review of, performance review in three months with potential adjustment of the rate.
I second that.
Any other discussion?
None.
Cindy, would you reread that, just so we are clear on the detail?
I'll attempt to do so. I have to move in second to offer the position of zoning inspector to Carrie Smith at the rate of $25 per hour with a three-month review period at which time rate will be, you can go to review. Is that clear enough, Chris?
Yes, ma'am.
Couldn't we call a roll?
Mr. Murcher?
Yes.
Ms. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. House?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Resounding, yes, chairman.
I've said this before, I think that was a, a good back and forth, we often don't have back and forths. Can we now go to standing committee reports?
VRPC did not meet. We're finally good on our dues and our designees. I didn't realize that the invoice hadn't been paid this year. That was, that was me, and I'll take my, um, Natural Burial Committee meeting on the 29th in this room. We're go, we're taking, we're going out there Friday and, you know, looking at some things, some invasive, some areas, we had gotten advice last year from a nice park ranger who suggested some of those places, usually Chris, especially on the honeysuckle side. It's not, we're not having to look at honeysuckles as far as I know, but some, you know, maybe some mowing and plasticing, burning, putting plast, plastic over some areas to, to reseed and try not to let the invasives. So if you see us messing around up there, don't be surprised. We'll try to keep in the loop, everyone in the loop. Any other mine? West Development Corporation, we met in this room last week. Oh, they would like us to pay our dues? Do we need a motion or a resolution for that? Or do we just pay them because we've agreed?
I'm, I'm assuming that something was sent out and we didn't catch it or?
I, I, I thought it the day after last meeting, I said, so sorry, we just had a meeting last night, so I don't even.
No, I don't, I don't think we need to vote, but. I believe it's $1,000 a year.
And Chris, I don't know if you.
Is it $2,000?
We have two representatives.
I don't know.
We pay for, um.
So.
Wait, what? Speak up.
Cory.
That's right, but I, I, okay, I'm confused, I thought it was my organization, not my representative.
Yeah.
Well, that's kind of looked at the invoice.
Yeah, it's, they, I, that was mentioned at the meeting.
Well, whatever the invoice says, we should pay, and I don't think we need to vote on it.
Okay, cool.
Just get a copy.
This was my first year out there, I didn't know.
Get a renewal, get a second copy of the invoices, if, if Lombr doesn't know where it is.
I'll get it to Gina, Gina. Ed, I mentioned the Green County, so county disociation done.
Yeah, I'll follow up with Cedarville and Xenia.
I'll send that email so it's at the top of your, um, top of your emails.
Green County Regional Planning.
World Record Shortest Meeting, I think, very much, 10 minutes.
10 minutes?
10 minutes.
I thought, the, the world's record for Green County Planning Commission.
Yeah.
Didn't Lamar have a township, one of seven minutes?
No, it was eight.
Oh.
It's not seven, it was eight. We actually reviewed two matters, one Bath Township zoning amendment to change, change zoning at the intersection of 444 and 675, because they're going to put a Wahoo, no, that's not right, gas station, big thing there. And then, and then the tech, the zoning text amendment that I, that was about, but we passed it, and that was the whole 10 minutes.
And then your meeting coming up, it's going to be a couple of Miami Township amendments.
True.
Uh, just to remind people, when the county planning commission reviews, uh, proposed zoning, uh, it's a recommendation, it's, it's a consulting, it's, they, they can't veto or whatever, they just give, give advice. That goes back to the specific jurisdiction.
And so ours will be about the, um, the personal or the self-generated, so they're calling it, and also the temp, the first round of the temp use, temporary use exception.
Uh, Clifton Union Cemetery has involved me more than the previous five years because of, I've mentioned before that we were willed a house, uh, and we had somebody clean it up, take down the garage that was literally four feet, tilting four feet off center. The pictures were taken, the pictures were posted in a formal listing of the house for sale, and within 24 hours, uh, there was an offer that we accepted. And the income from the sale of the house would be roughly $90,000. Will be an endowment for care of the cemetery. So that will slightly reduce what we've been contributing to the mowing and maintenance we pay half, and Green Township and Clark County pays half.
And unfortunately, the coffers of the Clifton Cemetery have been pulled up for the past two years.
Yeah, we haven't paid anything.
Yeah.
Yes, there was, it was already a 60,000 reserve, it's been shrinking. I don't have any other report. So we have new business and old business in executive session. Help me out, are there, uh, likely to be decisions that we will come back and vote on?
I would say no, but I'm just one person.
I would think potentially.
Their personnel matters, personnel compensation matters. So we might be returning to public session.
So I'll make the motion that we move into executive session, what matters is personnel compensation.
The first listing says for communications, is that the same, same wording?
I'm not sure what that is.
It involves compensation.
So it's the same wording as the previous?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I've made the motion.
Second. Can we call a roll, please?
Uh, we have to second it, enter executive session for discussions of personnel compensation. I'll have this correct, please, in. 6:14?
Public is welcome to wait?
I vote yes.
Oh, wait.
Sometimes you vote, sometimes you don't. Mr. Murcher, Ms. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. House?
Yes.
Recession at 6:14.
Danny, remind me, was it just two weeks ago that you proposed that resolution? I'm, I'm arguing or suggesting that we wait for the context of the assessment from the state. assessment from the state chiefs, associate, whatever, that we plan to develop a more detailed personnel retention and team development. You propose, you consult, whatever. And what you're proposing may well be part of that. But but that we're not voting on it today and that we want that context. And we're about to get a load of information. And that what you're trying to do you know, professional retention is very important, but it's how we do it, what's our context and more details. But I want to honor that you are pushing on that and that you made specific proposals, you priced it, you made estimates of cost. But that we we keep keep on it, but we're not gonna act immediately.
So you guys are aware there are six people who are actively looking at. There are nine fire departments in our area who are actively hiring full-time pension people. If I lose those six people, I do not replace those six people. So that's the board's decision, but understand if we lose all those people, that was your decision.
My my concerns were the process, who is chosen, why we're passing up paramedics, why we're doing three at once.
And we're about to get this, supposedly about to get this report, and it's the draft that we expected last December. And then so my picture is, you know, I mean, this is a hot item and maybe in two weeks we'll feel like we can act on it. Have a work session, a public work session talking about the about these issues, get some publicity in the community about our struggle, the potential struggle, about our concerns, your concerns. So this is not a dismissive thing, but let's whether it's wait two weeks, four weeks, let's at least get that report and have a.
I would like some advice from the board as to how you want me to share that information with the membership.
Well, I don't know why the membership knows it already, why people were promised and and talked about pensions in this fashion. I really don't know.
Well, it was a motion was not a motion.
No.
There's a proposed resolution that's public record.
Well, they were kind of led out. I think there's questions.
I have never led anybody like that. That was done, that was done in August last year. Once again, you accuse me of something that I have not done.
What this this recent round, why were they all marching in if you had?
Because they do not trust you or the board. That's why.
And and they they may trust you, I don't know.
What's the point of this discussion right now?
I have a proposal for, that I shared with them, another retention proposal to give us time that would that would keep people.
Well, I think we're talking about weeks. I don't I don't, I want to have the.
I would say.
The assessment report and.
I would say offer them a short-term generous retention and put this, take take this slower. We're on the first stable ground we've been on in in years. And all of a sudden, we're just gonna haul off and put three people on the benches. It's just amateur to me. I just can't even believe it's being discussed.
Well, you just said you shared something with these guys about a proposal that you've never shared with me. And we sat, what, six weeks ago and talked about the pension stuff, you and I?
Yeah, we we talked about it. I was shocked when I came in to hear you wanted to to put three three M T's. I'm shocked you were you were passing up two paramedics without without much.
I specifically shared that with you when you and I had that conversation.
I said, Danny, three people, why won't you share? And then I said, what about these two E M T, the two paramedics? You gave me an answer to that I thought was not sufficient at all about why these people are gonna pass up. And and the reason I have, I the reason I didn't share my alternative plan is because I went, when I, as I walked away and thought about how untenable what your proposal was, I didn't want to come back and just be a naysayer without an alternative plan. So for the first time tonight, I presented it to.
Well, let me emphasize that we recognize the the challenge and appreciate you pushing on this and that we do have assumably new information about to show up. Give us context, that is, the organizational assessment. And with that, we'll keep talking and develop. There will would be action taken, but it may not be exactly what you just proposed. That's your call?
Well, and also you're reminding us it's not that you just proposed it in at least six weeks of the making.
I would like to consider that we put on a faster track of an alternative plan in bias.
Well, I'm arguing that it should be in the context of this assessment.
A meeting and a meeting and meeting and that meanwhile, those guys are back there blind, not knowing what we're talking about. All they know is they're we're talking about something that they have no control over. My proposal, I'm just gonna say it because, why not? My proposal, just to put, just to put it out there, can be worked with. A dollar an hour raise and a thousand dollar bonus for anybody who would sign a contract to stay with this for a year while we get this all sorted out. That so since you asked me what what that was, I think it's a generous offer and and it makes more sense than going headlong into numbers in your in your in your resolution, you said, whereas we have the money to in the twenty twenty-four budget to do this, therefore we shall whatever. This isn't a one-year on proposal you're making to to to.
I think I'm very aware.
To 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 almost double the career track positions is not something that we just look to twenty twenty-four. Do we have money to get through this year?
What we're talking about right now, you you've made a detailed proposal, you've made a proposal, is exactly what we need to be doing. And I'm I'm asserting that we should do it. I'm I'm trusting that we're gonna get this assessment report and that we'll have that context and we'll continue this discussion with
And that was.
More information, more context. And however, if people are gonna make it, their decisions in the next two weeks, four weeks, that my my position would not be affecting that. That can be a problem.
Because I think too, yeah. That's why I I think one thing I agree with Danny on is that they're impatient and they're in the dark and it's frustrating for them.
Well, they feel they've been misled.
I feel they've been misled, but I don't feel like I was the one that misled them.
I didn't say that.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's a convoluted, I I find it to be a very convoluted description of what's happening.
Oh, you and I have a very differing opinion of.
Colin popped off an idea last year when I was out of town about putting a bunch of people in the pension and I was horrified when I got back to town because especially at that time, we didn't have time. So how this, how people seem to think that pensions are just something that's.
Well, you're willing to you're willing to pay a zoning inspector twenty five dollars an hour. My paramedic started around twenty-two an hour. And they certainly are more trained and qualified.
I understand that.
That's part of what frustrates people.
That's what's that and and we can't control the the pay markets for there are other, that's on par with other departments. There's some that get paid a little more, but there there are jobs out there that fifteen I don't say they don't, they deserve fifteen dollars an hour. I said that I can't control the the job market.
No, unfortunately, none of us can. That's a nightmare that of reality. That's not just a problem that you need to target.
It's horrible that paramedics are paid twenty-two and that we have E M Ts with, they pay, I think fifteen seventy-nine is what our lowest cost is. So, yeah, I agree with you. And that's why I think they need, I think they need relief. I think they, I think they're frustrated and they need they need some immediate relief, but I can't see that immediate relief going headlong into. I mean, this is the first time I've relaxed since I got on board because we weren't riding a wild roller coaster of a budget. And then I feel I feel like we're being asked to for a hail mary pass back into it.
Well, I repeat, this is a vital burning issue and we're not voting to endorse or approve your specific proposal tonight. And there'll be more information soon and we'll keep keep at it. Do you want to say anything, Chris?
No, sir.
I think we're not gonna take any action tonight, so.
Well, I think Danny and I can both agree this is a less than satisfactory outcome, but.
I suggest we adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second. I'll declare the meeting adjourned.